Go ahead and jump right into the work session. Chief Hollinghead, you have some presentations to make. Been sun tanning somewhere.
I'm working on it. Little by little. Mayor, Council, I just want to thank you all again for allowing us to come up here and make these presentations. It's always good to be able to share the good that our police department, our officers are doing with you all and with the citizens. So tonight, I'm here to recognize two officers for their outstanding service. All right. Well, I was prepared. Oh, here it is, in front of me. The first officer that I would like to recognize is Officer Raymond Clark. His recognition comes from an incident that he was involved in on February 18th of 2021. While on police patrol, Officer Raymond Clark was returning from a class in Orange Beach while listening to the radio traffic about numerous vehicle windows that were being shot out with a BB gun throughout the jurisdiction. Officer Clark recalled from the previous day work shift where he was dispatched to call to a call indicating two male subjects brandishing a firearm were sitting in a car in a nearby subdivision. Officer Clark made contact with the two male subjects and verified that they did have indeed a BB gun with them. Making the connection, Officer Clark contacted the on-duty supervisor that next day and relayed the information identifying the two subjects, the vehicle tag which led officers and investigators to their addresses or to their address. Officers contacted the, made contact with the offenders at which time they confessed, which led to the closure of 24 felony cases of shooting into an occupied vehicle. It's because of Officer Clark's dedication and attention to detail, he was responsible for finding closure to 24 felony cases that occurred within the city of Fairhope, saving many man-hours of investigative work and countless other civilian complaints of damage until the offenders were apprehended. So if I get Officer Clark to come forward. Officer Clark is being awarded a certificate of commendation for his service. All right, the second officer I'd like to recognize is Corporal Damian Rehorn. Corporal Rehorn was selected as the Officer of the Quarter for the first quarter of the year. Corporal Rehorn is dedicated, is a dedicated employee who consistently finishes at the top of the department in stats and always makes time for many other responsibilities that he's involved in with the department. I would like to share an incident that actually took, took place prior to him getting Officer of the Quarter, which helped in making this decision. In March, Corporal Rehorn came in contact with a citizen who had accidentally donated her seven-year-old son's baseball gear during a donation drop-off at Goodwill. He and other officers searched the donation drop-off but was unsuccessful in locating the gear. The mother, being extremely upset, and explained she did not have the means to replace the equipment before her son would need it for his next game. Corporal Rehorn then on his own drove to his home and retrieved some of his own son's equipment, baseball gear, that he was not being, that he was not using. He also contacted several of his other friends and asked them to do the same. And then he drove to her home and gave the gear to her. This is just one example of his character and generosity. In addition to, well, let me go back and let me go ahead and ask you to come up forward. So Damian received a certificate for Officer of the Quarter for the first quarter of the In addition, in April, he was also chosen, other than just Officer of the Quarter, he was also chosen, he was nominated and selected by his peers to receive the Blake Bauer Memorial Service Award. This is an award given annually through the Rotary Club of Fairhope that was created in memory of our brother in blue, Blake Bauer. The recipient, recipient of this award is chosen by providing a consistent display of leadership, integrity, commitment to the community service, and performance above and beyond. I would just like to thank these two officers for their continued dedication, commitment, and service to the city of Fairhope and its citizens. Job well done. Thank you all.
Thank you. Council, any comments?
Job well done.
I just want to thank all of you, all the men and women in Blue and Fairhope. And y'all are doing a great job and, you know, it was great to see you all at Arts and Crafts Festival and, you know, keeping things under control. I don't think anything got out of control, but maybe because you were there. But always being pleasant, always speaking to somebody and, you know, your character, that says it all. So thank you. Absolutely.
You'll see we have the PowerPoint slide and also you have a set of financials so that you'll be able to refer back to if you need to start. We're going to start with our cash balances. For general fund, as a total at March 31st was $13,523,173, which is, it is down about $2 million from previous year at this same time period. And that, I do contribute that to Hurricane Sally because reimbursement hasn't started coming in, but we are, we are getting close on those.
Let me stop you there again. So when we get reimbursed, will our general fund balance be, and I may be getting ahead of you, will it be greater than where we were, the fund balance at this time last year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great.
Because we've used the $5 million of a line of credit, but we also have used operating cash to pay those expenses. So that's the reason you'll, you'll, we'll have it next year, be a better number. Utilities, cash balance, utilities as a whole was $28,97,268. That number is down $3.8 million, and that's going to contribute to projects that we've been working on, so that, which has been budgeted to use cash.
Can I also cut in on you one more time?
That's fine.
So on the, on the general fund, where Kim mentioned that we had spent $5 million in a line of credit, the reason that we did that is we're making more money in our rainy day fund than we're paying in interest. So it was, we come out ahead by borrowing the money and repaying the interest as opposed to losing the interest earned on our rainy day fund.
That's right. That is correct. So our next slide, I want to talk about the general fund, local taxes. Our local taxes compared to, compared to last year, you'll see that property tax is up to 6.4 million, which you'll, I mean, just looking around Fairhope, you will see more houses that you might have seen two years, which it goes back two years, you would probably seen a field, a con field, and then now you see houses subdivision. That's what you're going to start seeing. And, you know, you see it in the news that the prices in Fairhope, the houses are valued a little bit higher than other areas of the county. Our sales tax is very strong at 12% compared to last year. And you have to realize in the time period that we're looking at snapshot is before everything started shutting down for COVID. So we're really looking at, you know, really some strong numbers in your sales tax. Simplified seller's use tax, up 46%. Last year, the law, the law was changing, January of 20, the law changed with the simplified seller's use tax where Amazon as a marketplace facilitator, they now have to collect tax on everything that runs through Amazon. And so what you're starting to see is more of the marketplace facilitators. eBay is now having to require their marketplace facilitator. You start seeing these other big platforms have to start collecting that sales tax to the state. And then you've got the people that are still, more people are buying online. And so that's the reason that number is increasing, that you're seeing a 46%. There's going to be a point that we'll, we'll start seeing that as leveling out, but yeah, it's still very strong. Lodging tax is really what was hurt on the city from the COVID-19. That area is not, you know, is not back up. You know, we did budget that to be a low number. So it's, right now, it's down 12% compared to last year at this time. So in total of our local taxes, we're up 9.2%. Do you have any questions on those taxes? The next slide here, I've gone into more detail of other, other revenues that we have. I'll just try to highlight just some of them that we can just actually go to the negative. Court revenue is down. You know, we just haven't had court as much and, you know, I'm believing on, due to a lot of people out of work, they're just not paying those court fees. But, but a lot of it is, they just haven't held court like they would, would have in the past. So there's where you see court is down. Adult rec is down, and we've had our NIC Center closed. So you're going to have, you see the reduction that that's caused for our revenues for the NIC Center. Our interest in rents, also the Civic Center not being able to use for events, that's created it to be down. The next item that you're going to see is a big negative number is in other revenues, grants, charges, and services. So what we have is a $620,000 FEMA reversal. So the revenue was recognized as an accrual in September of 20. It reversed out and then we'll have the revenue booked this year. It has not been booked. We are making headway with FEMA. I've got right now around almost $400,000 that's in the pipes to be paid any day now. I can see it out there on the, on the state's website. So that's coming through. Our, right at nine, almost $10 million of debris is, actually has moved through all its processes except it's waiting at the federal level because the project is over $1 million. It has to wait for Congress to allot that money. So once, and there, and that should be a three-week process. So once, once through that process, it'll get to the state level and then I'll be able to see that. So I think we're, we're making headway on, on the FEMA projects. Also, reduction in that revenue is 716,000 of transfers that would come from the utilities to pay into the general fund. I actually did that transfer in April versus March. So that's, that's what shows a reduction in this timeframe that we're looking at. And then if you'll look in, also in the transfers, last year at this time, we did an $884,000 transfer from impact fees to pay for the park that was purchased at 13 and 32. So we had used money from impact fees and it was transferred in as a revenue. So anyway, you have any questions on this slide? This next slide is the general fund, comparing the general fund revenues and expenses to see where we are at this time last year. And you'll see that our total revenues is $18,489.1. It is a decrease from, from last year. And again, that goes back to the explanation I had, the impact fee we had last year of $884,000 that was a transfer in. That was part of that number. And then we have in expenses, we've spent $9.3 million of Hurricane Sally in this, in this year, which was for debris cleanup.
That's a typo there at the top, says three months into 3/31.
Oh, yes, it is. Yes, it is. That is all supposed to be six months. The next slide is gas fund. So you'll see that gas fund for the revenue was, is $5,195,559. That is up by $664,329 from last year. And just to give you an explanation of the increase, the sale of gas is up $471,000. And then you'll see cost of energy is $1,191,298, up the $261,536. And the cost of energy, that is due to those sales. We have a decrease in the expenses of $1,799,584. And what I've analyzed there, you know, we had, it was some transfers that would have been, should have been transferred in March, but was transferred in April, which was $273,000. Do you have any questions there on gas?
Yes. So those earnings are significantly higher. So, I mean, obviously that's going to, we can, can we put that to work with those capital improvement projects that we have? Hopefully maybe budget it for the next year or if we need to make a decision this current year, I believe that we may have some funds. I don't want to get too far ahead, but we're six months into it, we could probably start diverting some of those funds if, or at least banking it for the improvements.
Yeah, and when we did work on the capital five-year projections, you know, we, we remember, we got some things there and it, you know, this is just going to help that look stronger.
It's going to look that, yes, absolutely. So we'll get a revision on that. Okay. Great.
On the electric, our revenue is $8,166.05, and that is a decrease of $1,397,511. And, you know, we've got a decrease in our, in our energy of $787,000. So that's where you're seeing the difference here. And we have a FEMA revenue that was booked in September and then it was reversed. And then again, we'll be booking that revenue. I've already seen that project worksheet for the electric department infrastructure, and that is a million-dollar project worksheet of revenue that will be coming back through coming this year. That project has not gone through all its review process yet. So, but that will be revenue that'll be coming back in for utilities. And then on the cost of energy is up, which doesn't, it sounds, it sounds a little off, but last year we received a $467,000 levelization rider. This year, we have not received it, but we're banking those levelization riders for the new meters program that we're going to be putting in place the end of this year into next year. And so that's the program that we're going to use those levelization riders.
And that's about $500,000 a year.
Yeah. So we're, we're banking those amounts. So that's the reason you see that swing is we, we booked the levelization rider as an offset in cost of energy versus we should be booking that as a revenue.
It's credit.
And then the, the expenses is, is down $196,000. And what, a lot of that is the, I don't know, I have that in my notes. That I have in my notes. I left that off my notes, so I may have to get back with you to look at the details of the reduction in expenses. No. Y'all have any question on electric?
I'm just making an assumption that the revenues are down in part because of the aftermath of Hurricane Sally. Is that, and people not being online for a while?
Well, that, that could be that the storm, I mean, they were already back, had electricity back up and running by September 30th. So, I mean, that could have rolled in, that could roll into it. And it just depends on the coldness of the winter. If you notice, the gas is up. When gas is up, usually that's, I mean, and these guys back here can probably answer that better than I can. But when you're seeing those, the gas revenue going up, there's those gas heaters coming on versus, yes, AC. Any more questions there? Water department is, is really to me, the revenues is close to being flat. They're up $40,000 in the revenue. And I've got in my notes here that the water sales is up $33,000. Connection fees up $47,000. I've got a $16,000 FEMA reversal that we'll, we'll book that this year. Cost, cost of energy is just down $5,000. And then our rev, our expenses is down $238,000. And where I've got there a note is that I booked the transfers in April versus March was $267,000. But in total, water, water department is looking good. Sewer, sewer, we're up $100,000 in revenue. And when I look at the, when I'm looking at the revenues for sewer charges, we're up actually $287,000. And then I have a FEMA reversal for some FEMA revenue of $221,000. So there's our, a good summary of it. And then the cost of energy is pretty flat. And then we have a decrease in expense is due to that transfer of $91,000 that should have been booked in the correct period. And then next, we have sanitation. Sanitation is included in general fund, but I think it's important for y'all to look at, that is a very like-type enterprise-type business. But you'll see that the revenue is pretty, is pretty flat. Our, our expenses is, is flat too. You know, your, your new rates, y'all increased the rates is April 1st. So at least we're very close to where we were last year of having a loss that, you know, it wasn't greater, but it is flat. But the new rates will be coming in, in, excuse me, in April, so we should start seeing improvements in the sanitation department. Any questions for that?
I think we'll see a lot of improvement there.
Yes, yes. Golf department, revenues are, is up $85,000. And I just, I just wanted to highlight because COVID, at this point last year, we hadn't shut down the golf department. And so this was really looking at a full, everything was going good and, but we're up $85,000. Our membership fees is up $11,000. Green fees are up $11,000. Cart rentals is up $38,000. Driving range, $12,000. Food and beverage is up $13,000. So they got some good things going on at the golf department. We have in expenses, we're down $25,000. I've got some ups and downs. We've got salaries are down $27,000, but lease of equipment, which that's the new golf carts, is up $27,000. General supplies is down $13,000. And equipment and vehicle rental is down right at $5,000. So we have some, some downs, but I did want to highlight just some positives that we have going on there at the golf department.
And let me ask you this, it probably just went into the general fund, but we sold all of those golf carts and made quite a bit of money. Is that reflected in here?
No, because that was sold before, that was last year's numbers.
Was that prior to, it's been that long?
Yes. We received these golf carts, I believe.
I just thought maybe it went under another source of income.
April, May is when we received these golf carts last year.
Golly.
Yeah.
Seemed like a few months ago.
Next, the marina. We've got increase in revenue at the marina of $8,000. We've got some increase in slip rental is up $5,000, and we have fuel sales up $3,000. Our expenses is up, but that's due to fuel costs. So our fuel cost is up $13,000. And just to give you an idea on just regular gas from the past six months has gone up 75 cents per gallon. So that's something we just happen to really monitor closely. But the marina's holding its own.
But we do, we do, Jimmy and I monitor those, the cost of the fuel, and we do fluctuate the prices when we get increases. Some, the spread is not as good as it was to remain competitive. The spread has decreased, but we do, we do adjust when our costs go up.
Next, I just want to have a slide here for salaries. And you have in your package on page 40, on page 40 of the financial packet that I gave you, it details out each department that you have salaries for. And so you can just see on general fund, we, we've had some savings and, you know, really that's just nutrition of people leaving, coming, you know, that we have some savings in the general fund. And then you'll see on gas, electric, water, sewer, in the utilities, there is increase in salaries. But you'll be able to, well, you can't see into detail, but if y'all need more detail than what, what you have there, I'll be happy to be able to go through and get that for you. But we're still, we're still in budget. If you'll look on your page 41, you'll see salaries in total for the city, we're at 56%, which, you know, we're six months of spending, that's where we want to be, you know, knowing that we have 56% of our budget still left in, in salaries. Next, overtime. So overtime, we're over, in the general fund on our overtime compared to last year at this time. What I could tell looking at is the streets department is really maxed out on their overtime at this point in time. I, you know, just with me analyzing it, I believe the streets department had put up the lights for the Christmas tree lighting. So that might have not have been budgeted properly, and it would be different from la, if we look at this year compared to last year.
Let's talk about that for a moment, if we may. Let's say that they are over by $11,000 compared to what would it have cost us to contract that out? I mean, I think it's a massive savings.
I guess.
As long as the employees are happy with that, I would, I would rather reward them for the work than hire a contractor if they're willing to do it.
Yeah.
Would you agree with that, Mayor?
I agree. And the other thing that probably was contributing with that is that we combine construction, facilities, maintenance, and street budget, and facility, construction, facility, maintenance, they're also on, on call, so that also contributes.
And I know we have on the water and sewer, y'all know there's a lot, been a lot of call-outs of, you know, water line breakage sewer. So, you know, when I've definitely seen water and sewer, you know, you just, you know what's going on, water and sewer department. You have any questions on that? And like I said, if you need more information that I can get for y'all, just please let me know and I can.
Still not really that much over budget on the overtime, really, for six months. Not, I think that, they look, numbers look pretty good.
Yes, they look, I, I think they look good. So overall, do y'all have any questions? Is there more information I can show y'all? These, the handout that you have of the financials, these were, this is new format. I can make these however you would like. New software that y'all purchased for finance this year gives us the ability that we can design, and it links right into our software. And so it pulls it into Excel and we can do whatever formulas we need for them, but it actually pulls the raw data into a good format that we can make it user, easier for y'all to read or any type of information you need.
This is very good, Kim. And I wanted to read to everybody. If you haven't had a chance to see your email, at 2:00 today, I received an email from the League of Municipalities on the American Rescue Plan Act. It's the U.S. Treasury launching a coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds to deliver $350 billion. I quite honestly do not know where they get the money, but we'll be asking for our share of wherever the money's coming from. And if you look down. And if you look down to the last bullet, we would all be interested in invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, improving access to clean drinking water, supporting vital wastewater and stormwater infrastructure, and expanding access to broadband internet. Think we could all appreciate that. And I hope we get to work on that pretty quick. Good deal.
So I've been researching it and, you know, I keep going out to the Fed's site because the Treasury is the one that's going to be setting those rules. The way our funding will come through is half. We'll get half the $4 million this year. And it will come to the state. The state will send it to us. So this is a little different than the reimbursement. And then we'll have until 2024.
We already know how much we're getting?
We do. So what I've been researching is.
This was in addition to everything else that we thought we were getting.
In addition to, and it's 121 days within the state receiving the money that they have to, they have to send it to us. And if they don't, it's a penalty for the state.
Yes.
So they put some provisions in place to make sure the state can't take the money to what they did last time.
Yeah, they can't take it back. But we will be under audit from the Treasury. There's a lot of, you know, to make sure we do what we need to do with the money. So that's the reason I've been trying to research and get on the Treasury's site. They're supposed to give guidance. I did print out 150-page document today that's some preliminary. So just because it's federal money with some, you know, usually some strings of tax, I'm trying to do my due diligence to be able to make sure that y'all know how, the best way that we can spend the money properly.
Okay. Great.
Anything else?
Any questions for Kim? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, committee updates. Councilman Boone.
Well, we're having a personnel board meeting on the 20th at 7:00 a.m. Anybody would like to get up that early to come to join us? First one we've had in several months. It'll be good to get everybody back together again, go over everything, be in the mayor's conference room.
Councilman Robinson? You go second. Either way, I go now, I mean.
That's fair. You know, I like to go first, but I'll take second.
I'll remember that next.
Bike and pedestrian, Jessica, will you come over here and help me for a second? Just kind of, just to kind of give them a better heads up. The bicycle and pedestrian committee is working on their, not bicycle, Streets of America, what's the word?
They're looking for the bicycle-friendly designation.
Bicycle-friendly designation. And there are some things that they're going to need from us. Maybe some revised ordinances and some things that we're looking into that are going to help us fit into that category. Right now, I don't think we do.
That's correct.
And so that's, it's going to be a little bit down the road, but I just want to put that bug in your ear, get y'all thinking about that. And so just, just a heads up for down the road.
And one major thing is going to be that the council is probably going to need to make a decision that we pursue becoming a bicycle-friendly community. There are quite a few, quite a few things they need to hit as a committee to be able to get the points needed for that designation. There is not a desire to move forward with that until we know we can hit the points. We don't want to apply for it and then fail. So I'm sure that Councilman Robinson is going to be bringing those to you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Anything else?
That's it.
Councilman Conyers?
I don't have any updates at this time.
Councilman Martin?
None at this time.
Okay. The airport authority met last week. And probably of note would be that they are proposing a 2% tax on goods and services sold at the airport, which could be a really good revenue generator for the airport authority. And we'll go just one step closer to making them self-sufficient and not relying on the city. In addition to that, we are going after some money from the state, which we feel pretty good we're going to get to build, you know, maybe an FBO on the east side, which would further help make them independent from the city. So a lot of good news coming out from there. I was looking on my phone real quick and I couldn't, I couldn't find it real quick. So I'm going to ask Mr. Busby, who's in the office, maybe for, in the audience, for a little help. The Eastern Shore MPO is going to have a public hearing on the Bayway project. And that's going to be on May the 19th. May the 19th, 5:30, I believe, to 7:30 p.m. at the Fairhope Satellite Courthouse. So citizens that would like their input to be heard on the Bayway, proposed a new Mobile River Bridge and Bayway project can attend that. And then the Eastern Shore MPO on June the 9th will have a special call meeting to determine whether or not we want to put the project back on the long-range transportation plan and possibly also on the transportation improvement plan. I get all that right from my own meetings? I believe I did.
Yes, and Mobile is going to be the week.
Mobile's will have a meeting on June, they're going to meet, I think, on June the 2nd. But their hearing is the week prior to May the 19th, maybe May the 12th. They're also having a public hearing. And I wanted to stagger those meetings so that people from both sides of the bay could give input to the, to the, you know, opposite MPOs should they want to be heard by both sides. I think that's all I have for committee updates. Anybody else? Council Mayor, do you have anything you want to say in regards to that? All right, we'll go ahead and jump into department head updates. We've got about 20 minutes to do these all. I want to, I do want to get through the agenda starting at 5:30. So Kim, you just gave a big report. Do you have anything else to add?
We hired a person manager trying to leave that was starting to work.
Okay, all right. Hunter?
Yes, sir. Just a request here. There's something that we've kind of been discussing at planning commission cases. And in the CBD especially, Central Business District, we do, we've kind of moved along historically with certain parking requirements. And a few cases that have come up recently have kind of pushed the thoughts there. And should we be doing something different? And that is a conversation happening with planning commissioners. And if we do propose any amendments to the zoning ordinance, which would change those, they're going to come to council for approval. However, if we can get those comments beforehand, and if you want to have a conversation with me, let me give you an update. Anytime where we will not be having that, any proposed amendment in June. So it'd be July at early, so we have some time. But so just if there's any, anything I can do to help further the education on that and get any thoughts, I would love to have that, whether it be email, call. I think y'all have my number. Any feedback on that is welcomed. A couple of other things we do have, and the great news, we have a lot of fiber companies coming into town. That's a good thing. So getting that broadband in Fairhope and around Fairhope is a great thing. In the long term, it's going to be some bumpiness. You know, we've got currently two applications totaling about 26,000, 26,000 feet of line. Most of those are going to be boring. Those will, those two cases will be at the July, if everything works out right, for planning commission for 115211 review. Again, if you have any questions, one of those is going to be central business district centric. So, you know, that's a lot of boring in the CBD. So we're just starting those reviews. Just want to make sure y'all aware if y'all have any thoughts or comments on this. And that's all I've got. If you have any questions?
I have one comment I want to hear from council if they'd like to make a comment. I applaud you for taking that on, the parking issues that we're going to be running into more and more in the CBD. And I do think that there may need to be some modifications to the ordinance to address that, especially when it comes to high use and maybe high-density developments in the CBD, which causing a lot of issues. And I think the only way to solve some of those is going to be with some legislation. Anybody else have a thought on that?
Just that we have been running into the issues more and more frequently in the planning commission. So I appreciate you moving that forward.
Sure. Anybody else have a thoughts on that?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Richard?
Just a couple of key issues. And I'll let each respective utility kind of give the update on their portion of it. But the utilities restoration of municipal pier has gone, knock on wood, much smoother than expected. The utility tray is in, all of the conduit is there. And each respective utility is working to make theirs operational. And kind of our goal of a pretty quick order of operation is to get the lights on the pier back on, the water and sewers, we can open the bathrooms. And then, then we can start addressing the secondary issues, i.e. such things as the water bibs on the other pier for cleaning your hands and fish and things like that. And the secondary services to the marine area and everything else. So that is kind of a positive, and it's been a teamwork effort. And when I was down there at the end of last week, it was like an ant bed crawling with ants, with all the utility guys working together to make it happen. So we're just kind of glad that that's, that's coming closer to an end. And these two are kind of in combination. We are scrambling, and it looks like we're going to be the next meeting before we give you ability to make a decision on the stadium ADA. We are, we are struggling. We are floundering because on the materials cost, everything that we don't have under a current contract, we got to get it under, either through a purchasing group or through a bid quote process. And it's just bogged down. And, you know, our deadline is Wednesday to turn everything in to get it for the next meeting. But we are working there. There's a level of frustration. And to give you an example of kind of what we're dealing with in the marketplace, and Mr. Boone may be familiar with this. For example, the other day, or actually several weeks ago, we had a citizen trip and fall on a sidewalk. And then it had some issues. So we, that whole run of sidewalk, we went and pulled the panels that had been lifted up, had them formed, ready to go. We had to order the concrete, schedule the concrete three weeks in advance, three weeks. Crews got out there, had it all formed and ready. Concrete was supposed to arrive last Thursday morning at 9:00. And at 9:00, they just called us, said, "Do not bring it." They got a better offer. And we don't have a contract with the concrete company. And their complaint was, is, well, we had to stop at 10 different locations to pour those 10 panels we're placing. And even though they're charging us $50 per move, so we're compensating them for their time. But our biggest challenge, and this affects both our sewer, water, and gas utilities, is the ability to get concrete has become almost impossible. We schedule three weeks in advance, and then they don't honor that scheduled time. Or in many cases, what they've been doing to us, which really is tough, is we have a morning pour scheduled, and they push us off to 1:00 or 2:00 in the afternoon. And as you know, you can't leave concrete until you're finished working it. So those guys who normally shift ends at 3:30 is staying with that concrete until it's finished and can be left to go. So, and I think it's a legitimate issue with our ready-mix plants. The issue is, is not that they don't have raw materials, it doesn't have, that they don't have capacity at the plant. They have a limitation on trucks and/or drivers to drive those trucks. That is, they can't get employees. And so we are at least exploring if there is an option for us to look at what would it cost to get into our own truck so that if we can go to the plant and pick it up and have it where we need it, and we're going, when we know what that looks like, we're going to share that with you. But it has become a problem. And I do believe it's a short-term problem. But I don't know if that's a short-term problem that lasts for three months, six months, 12 months, 18 months. But the problem is, is that if, if Home Builder X has nine slabs, and they, they're willing to pay top dollar to have it there that day, we're not getting concrete that day. And that's what we're running into. And we are historically a small volume per pour purchaser, usually two, three, four yards, as opposed to a house that may take 40, 50 yards for a slab to be poured. So that is a challenge that we're running into. We can't get anybody to respond on a concrete pit because the free market, the open market out there pays the top dollar, and it's a commodity price. So that's just kind of the challenge that we're dealing with. We're going to hopefully get turned into you where we're at on that and have a decision which way we're going on the ADA program at the stadium because we do have to have y'all amend the resolution that picks the option with the contract for laboring us providing materials. But that's where we are, and it's just, it's tough out there. We have money, we're willing to buy it, we just can't get it to folks to sell it to us right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat?
See, first of all, we have the Farrow High School spring football game will be this Thursday night, the 13th, at the stadium. Graduation is Tuesday, the 18th, in the stadium. The pool lobby floor was completed last week. It turned out better than I expected. It really looks nice. My crews have been working on some different landscape projects at the rec center, also helping at the golf course some as well. So we've got an awful lot going on. It's just that time of the year for us. But thank you for the time.
Thank you. Pat, I just want to say real quick that, you know, we really need to, and I think we're waiting on some information to finalize that, that field use agreement that, I know we just keep kicking that down the road. But I think we're waiting. We did discuss it this afternoon for a little while. And I believe that so Marcus and the mayor and I had a short discussion on it. Kevin may have been involved a little bit as well. But if anybody asked, we hadn't forgotten about him. Is that where we're at? Are we waiting for some information?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Might want to add, if that information is not forthcoming, decisions will be made.
Paige?
I just have two quick things. So City Sketches, we just renewed that contract with y'all a couple of months ago. So those folks who are registered for an actual utility bill in the mail, we'll be seeing that back on the regular rotation. We've got the June and July issue hitting May bills right now. So we're continuing to push that communication out there, letting folks know. We've had a busy past couple of weeks. Like y'all know, everything's kind of opening back up. We had several events go on after arts and crafts. So we just want to let everybody know that communication is there. We're also going to have copies in all of our facilities, and I'll be sure to put one in y'all's boxes, too, so y'all can see that. Nick Center, I wanted to let everybody know, will be opening back up to regular capacity. Some of the folks up at the Department of Senior Services have kind of given us a little idea of what is coming down the pipe in the next two weeks. So we will be able to open that center back up full capacity without any kind of procedures or screenings and such. So we'll be able to open that membership back up, open that, which we are very excited about. So just wanted to let y'all know about that, and that's it.
Thank you. Bobby? Oh, okay. He's going to pass for now. Jessica?
Really quickly, we applied for recertification for Alabama Communities of Excellence. And we received word about a week ago that that recertification was approved. So the mayor will be receiving a plaque and, you know, notification on Saturday during the League of Municipalities event. So that's a big deal for us.
Thank you. Jerry?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Just real quick, I just, I've had over 100 phone calls in the past two weeks just for gas services on existing homes. That's how busy we are. Just have an idea. Most of them are generators. There's a few stoves, but 99% is generators. I hired one new employee, started to date. All that's going to help out a lot. Equix has put over 500-foot of forage bite on Church Street so far. They've killed 34 abandoned services that we found while we're digging these other ones up. So that's a good thing. Then there are services that, like I said, were found or going to old lots or burnt houses or just under the street. We should have an estimate hopefully this week on the budgeted price for changing all the pipe out into five zones, the cast iron and the steel. He's been working on that. That's a big project. He should have it to me this week, and I'll bring it forward and let you see it. Kind of give us an idea of what we're looking at money-wise.
About how many services can you run a day?
If nothing happens, we, you know, between the leak calls and the customer calls, if nothing happens, my guys can probably do five. Each crew can probably do five.
And you got how many orders in the last two weeks?
I've got 100 just on existing homes. Just, and that's, and that's first, we have to go look at and make sure we can even serve gas. We have to measure them, you know, to make sure it's feasible, make sure we can do it, make sure we can get in the yard. We got to meet with them, each person, so that's. Uh, we got to meet with them, each person, so that's where the time comes in. Um, but most of the guys get pulled off on a daily basis, you know, from leaks with the construction going on.
How short are you in staff now after this hire?
Um, I've got two more people to hire.
You got two more employees?
Yes. Okay. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jeremy? Running into you all day today.
I don't have anything for you. I'm just wearing a jacket and want to be seen, so. No, seriously, on a, on a serious note. Richard was saying, we've got, we've got the primary pulled. I actually got some work in finally after many years of not getting any work in, so I was able to help with that. But we dig at the primary install, so there's power on the, on the, I didn't go out there this weekend. I believe they got the lights on, the lights were on. So, the lights are on. Um, bunch of jobs popping up. Uh, we've got two guys that hopefully positions we need to fill that'll get done this soon, very soon. So, uh, other than that, that's it. That's all I got for you.
Thank you. You look good in that jacket. Travis?
Uh, real quick, I just say, the past two weeks, we've processed seven new hires for various departments. Unfortunately, we processed three retirements, so that's, uh, kind of going backwards, I feel like. But, uh, really looking at those processes and trying to meet that demand quicker. And, uh, it's obviously, these guys are dealing with a lot of turnover and trying to fill those positions, so try to get that. Uh, the HR department completed some valuable training on our software systems in the past two weeks, and, uh, maybe ask them for some more hours in the next budget on that. With a small department like we have, we've got to work smarter, not harder. And so, we got to utilize the software that we're already paying for. We just need to learn how to use it and implement it. So, uh, that was key, though, using that the past couple of weeks. Slowly but surely chopping away at our backlog and filing and things that were just not done over the past couple of years, so we're trying to get caught up, so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
Questions?
See you at the meeting.
Thank you. Tim?
I have the jacket too, but I really don't have to say anything. Jason is sick, so he's not able to come. Um, I guess update on the pier, water and sewer is hooked up. Still working on the lift station in, um, installing some new pumps, new panel. Um, the water, we got samples today to test. Um, that's 24 hours, so we should hear something back probably by noon tomorrow. Then we can go ahead and, I guess, kind of turn over to public works and, um, Otis and Lance. On the bathroom, that's kind of been sitting there for quite a few months, so I'm sure it'll need a little work before we can get the bathrooms back on. We do have two new employees. We have one on the way, I think, in the next couple of weeks, but, um, we still have, I think, three to hire, just trying to get people to put in applications and, um, let's see. We survived the rain today so far. Sewer's doing good, and waterside, I think we have a couple, well, two and nine is supposed to be redone. Y'all have already voted on that. Just pull maintenance part on that end, and in the next probably month, hopefully, we're, we're getting it scheduled with SUEZ to go at the 2 million gallon tank that had been painted. Y'all remember that loan?
Yep.
Well, I want, y'all understand, y'all remember. So, they'll do inspections, make sure everything's good, and look at the damage from the AT&amp;T tower. So, there will be something on that coming up. I have a couple of things, the yearly report on the meeting, I don't know if you-
Is it quick?
Have anything on that?
Is it quick? You want to, jealous?
Well, I know the biggest thing on the yearly report usually is probably the SSO. Um, overall, BOD, the samples, tan, testing and everything is pretty much exactly the same at, at the plant. Um, everything is good. We had an increase of about 300,000 gallons this year on average. Um, but everything treatment-wise has, wise has been good. SSOs, we'll just talk about the three storms we had. We had 38 total on that, that side. Um, 30 was from Sally, and then we had, uh, Cristobal. We kind of forgot about Cristobal, um, when we had the other two later on, but, so there were 38 from those three storms, and a bunch of rain. We had over, almost just under 40 inches of rain during those three storms, so, um, and the power outages, that really hurt us. Uh, and there also is a, there's also a pump on this council meeting too, backup pump. So, that'll be, uh, good if y'all approve that. Y'all have any questions on that? We, we've had just under 500 new sewer services last year, um, this year, you know, on the report.
What can we, and this may be for, for Richard, but I think it's, it's related to water and sewers. Do we think the restrooms might be operational by the weekend? Is that pushing it, or what do we think? On the pier, that is.
As soon as they say the lift station can receive, then we, we, we will have the bathroom ready to go. It's just the final connection, so we'll be able to pump it off.
We're getting that, getting the railing system in for the new pumps. It's just having to hook that electrical panel up. It could be, could be by the weekend.
Okay.
But overall, everything's hooked up. You know, pipe, the new pipes and everything ran. Um, new water pipe, everything's good. Tests will come back fine. You know, we just have, it's just part of regulations we got to do.
Can we touch on the smoke testing?
We are doing some smoke testing in the area, which, which that means we put a machine on the manholes, and it will send a, I guess we need to order, we talked about ordering bubble gum smoke, or something like a flavor or smell, because people worry about the-
I always wanted to smell and taste that sewer gas. Something I always looked forward to.
We're going to look into some kind of, because it smells like a oil kind of smell. Certainly, if, if you have an issue inside your house, I think it was Kevin we talked to, like a, a wax ring on your toilet. If you have gas coming in your house, that's not normal. Um, the sewer smell, that may be because of a wax ring or, or a P-trap issue inside your house. So, when we do the smoke tests, you'll have a little smoke coming in your house. If not, it should come out of your vents, which we've already had one-
Honey? What's wrong?
We did have one call, unfortunately, uh, over at Bancroft, where we were doing, and they called the fire department, so they got a good test rolling. I think even Daphne rolled, so.
Got it.
But, but people will see we're in, you know, we're kind of moving around. There'll be some in Lakewood areas, there'll be some Valley Street where we have some issues. Um, so, we're just trying to find problems, and we have already, uh, clean outs around homes opened. Nothing major, no roof drains yet, so hopefully we won't find any of those. But mainly, um, caps, sewer caps around your house.
And when you find them, do you give them a deadline to fix them, or how does that-
What we've done in the past, write them a nice letter with usually a picture locating where it's at, so they understand what it is.
Do we have a process to follow up to see if they've done it?
And then we'll go back and inspect it, make sure it's done right, and, um, and if they don't, we'll send them another letter, knock on the door, trying to get them in their home, you know, to fix the problem, let them know how important it is not to let your yard drain into the sewer system, because, uh, that's what the storm drains for.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Did, so, so we don't give a person a heart attack? Do we send letters out letting them know that the smoke-
So, they've been going door to door and putting hangers on the door, and then-
Prophylactically.
Yes, sir. And then, uh, we do let the PD know and fire department know when we're doing it.
And this is fire department's floor?
Yeah, I understand. Just, yeah. Just don't want to yell at the person.
Certainly, if you have issues, you know.
Very good. All right. Eric?
A couple of things for you. Um, as Hunter mentioned, we've got some large, uh, infrastructure projects coming for the planning commission. One of the things that we've kind of been slowly working on is, are some updates to our right-of-way ordinance. And, uh, talking with, with Richard and with Hunter and with John Thomas, uh, we would like to possibly talk to y'all at a, at a work session end of the month, first of June, and let's look at some things. There's some, it's an older ordinance, and it didn't, you know, there's a lot of new technologies. And fee schedule-wise, you need to take a look at where we are compared to some of the other communities, because we're, we're fairly low on a lot of those fees. So, we want to put together something for you to look at, and let's talk about it, and let's see how we want to address that, because that's just the first of the stuff that's coming. There's a lot of other stuff that's coming as far as infrastructure. So, we want to make sure our ordinance covers things. Two quick things. Uh, the two, two of the benchmarks for the building department are ISO rating and our community assistance visit, which is FEMA E's for a floodplain audit. Uh, we got our ISO rating a couple of months ago, and I don't know that I updated you on it. Uh, it's rated the same as the fire department, 10 to 1, 1 being the best. Uh, our previous rating where we were a four for residential and a five for commercial. We came back this time as a four for residential and a four for commercial. We improved, uh, on the commercial side. So, um, and that's pretty close. I think the only community that's above us right now is Orange Beach, and I think they're, they're down to a three on a residential, and they're a four on a commercial. So, we're, we're in good shape compared to everybody else. Um, our community assistance visit, for the first time, and I've been through four of them, our letter said absolute, they did a windshield visit, and we, uh, reviewed all our records, and they found no violations and thought we had a good permitting and inspection. And that's, usually, they get out in the field and they find something that I have to follow back up on, but, uh, they had no violations. We are free and clear until I hear from them again. Um, the other thing, I know cell, cell reception is a big issue for our citizens. We've got two projects in-house, or two building permit requests in-house for additional cell equipment on water towers. I know the, the cell tower up at 181 and 104, I think they're finalizing getting that thing online, so, good, bad, or otherwise, it'll help with the, with coverage when it, when it does happen. Uh, and, like I said, those things are coming in, so hopefully folks will start seeing some improvement in their, in their cell coverage. Okay?
Thank you, Eric. All right, counsel, if we can just jump into the agenda meeting. Um, item number five, I can cover that. This is just some procedural things that we need to, we need to just approve, the mayor to sign and execute some documents so that the airport authority can recover $23,000 in CARES Act money. Uh, Hunter, do you want to cover six and seven real quick? Let me ask you to come up here.
Yes, sir. Uh, number six is, it almost looks like an extension of Parker Road. Uh, I believe the name for that is Courtney Ridge, as approved by Balden County E-911. So, that is a right-of-way the city is taking over as part of the Fairhope Village PUD for, uh, and we do have the maintenance agreement follow-up with that. Item seven is, uh, the subdivision Fairhope Falls Phase III, and that is just the water infrastructure. So, that is, uh, other than that's out in the county, uh, we don't, we do not have anything except for the water on that subdivision.
We do supply water there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And that's on the left going out 104 before you get to 181?
That's on the right, all the way out by the river. That's actually adjacent.
Oh, oh, that's right. That's right. Oh, that's right.
It's on Fish River.
I had it wrong, subdivision.
Okay. Any questions on those? Be happy to answer.
Pretty standard, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Item number eight, uh, Jeremy disposing of some personal property of the electric department. Let's see, I'm not quite understanding this. Allows TCI of Alabama an opportunity to quote on all substation transformers that would be disposed of as each station goes offline. Kim, I don't know, do you need to speak to that, or Jeremy?
Cell, no transformers.
Well, you got the jacket on today, so we're going to give you maximum airtime.
It's something that made me feel more confident, but it ain't a super cloak. Uh, yes, so, you know, as we take these, we're doing our substation upgrades, we take these substations offline, we're left with the transformers over there. These transformers are, I mean, the ones at Twin Beach obviously have met their, uh, deadline. They are no longer being used to us, so we need someone to dispose of them, and nobody can just come, not anybody can come pick them up and just take them away. It's got to be disposed of properly. Uh, I've, I've searched a couple of places. TCI was willing to come out and actually give us a good deal on it. We're getting a great price, uh, for disposing of it. You got to do certain things with the oil. Uh, we have one company wanting us to dispose of the oil and chop it up and take bushes off, and it's just, it's not worth it when this company come in and just get it off our hands. So, you can take that money that you get, and wherever Kimberly and you guys want to stick it back in, we can put it and help with infrastructure.
I just want to make, it doesn't have to be put on Gov.D deals or anything like that, then?
Yeah, nobody on Gov. deals is going to get it. I guess they're not going to build it.
Pretty specialized, isn't it?
No, they, they got to go through a lot of-
Although I sold a used piece of carpet on Facebook Marketplace. Proud of it.
You can put it there if you want to try it.
Sell anything on there.
So, that's, that's what that's all about. Plus, as we go further and start, you know, taking more of them offline, we're going to have them just sitting there in the way, so being able to allow this company to come get them will help speed that process up, so. All right, y'all good with it?
Thank you, sir. Item number nine, uh, execute the First Amendment to the lease agreement. I believe that I can cover this. I'll, I'll try to do my best. We entered into this lease of the 16,000 square foot in the old library that'd be just to our left, uh, opposite side of the, um, of the civic center, the arena area there. Uh, USA has their nursing school in there. Uh, since 2007, they have been paying us $1 a year. Uh, they have been, but they did make a lot of improvements to that, and they have been, uh, responsible for the maintenance of that. Um, the mayor and I had been negotiating with them for quite a while now, and, uh, we would like to propose a new lease, or amendment to the lease, which is, uh, going to end in 2025, so it's really only four years. I believe it was going to end either this fall or next fall, right? And so, it will extend it a little bit, but we don't envision doing anything else with all the infrastructure improvements we have for about four years, at which time we do, uh, have the vision to, to make a lot of improvements to this building, but, uh, not prior to then. Uh, and the new lease amount would be $25,000 per year. So, that's a 25,000, in, uh, factor of 25,000 increase over what we're getting, but we will, uh, take over the maintenance of that as, as a, uh, as a lease or would normally have. Uh, they will continue to pay all utilities there as well. Any questions about that one? Item number 10, um, who wants to, who do you want to cover that, Mayor? Item 10. I mean, I, I could talk to it a little bit, but is there? Go ahead, Mayor.
So, um, most of you know that we've been talking about opening a symbol clinic, so we're getting closer to finalizing a contract to do that, an employee health clinic. And they do offer a wellness component. So, um, we were on a, a year-to-year contract with, um, infirmary, mobile infirmary, and to do the iHealthy community, um, program for our employees. And so, that comes up September 30th, so we decided to go ahead and terminate that contract effective September 30th, thinking that we would go with the symbol clinics wellness program. Um, we haven't had the amount of participation that we would like to have in the, in the program, in the wellness program, so we hope to revisit that and make sure we get more employee participation. And I did notify the infirmary today that this was on the agenda.
That was an option within the symbol clinic as well, right?
It is. It's an option.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Mayor about that? If so, at the time that we bring this resolution up, feel free to ask. Item 11 is amendment to, amendment number one to the contract for professional services with Goodwood Mills and Kaywood for the entire landfill property. Richard, can you speak to this, please?
Yes, and just as a clarification wise, kind of amendment, they, they did the survey work that was required for our 10-year permit renewal for the C and D landfill. But as you know, to the east of there, we not only have our inert landfill where we put the limb debris, but we also have an area that we, we do pull sand and clay out of. And we have no clear delineation of where our property ends and the neighbors begin. So we budgeted this as, as to bring them back in and complete the boundary survey that covers our eastern flank, because the one thing we do not want to wake up and find out that we've either been digging in our neighbor's yard or putting limb piles in our neighbor's yard. So, and this will be a boundary survey as well as mark all, and set all the corners so that we can go back if we need to fence or whatever in a future time, so. Any questions?
Any questions, counsel?
Thank you.
All righty. Thank you. We have a wardrobe change in the back of the room, I noticed. So we're going to ask Mr. Montgomery to come up and talk to us about the Duo Dual Authentication licenses for the IT department. I don't know, who's wearing whose coat?
I'm properly dressed now, so we can discuss item 12, just a yearly renewal of our dual authentication with Duo. We've had continued success with this product and like to carry it on for the next year.
All right. Pretty simple, counsel. Any question? Do we need to have a resolution to maybe stock a few coats and put them in a coat closet for supervisors to come up?
I think Jeremy's mocking us.
Yeah.
I think that's what he's doing. I see, he's laughing too hard.
He's laughing. He's having too much fun.
He's having too much fun.
That's good. That's good. I'm glad you're all. I really am. That's good stuff. Who was rocking whose jacket, though?
Look how negative you know you are.
Little room to grow.
He's got the collar flipped up in the back, I wasn't sure. All right, Jeff. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. Item number 13 is a ward for bid for a metal building, for the fabrication shop for the public works department, with a total cost of $61,000. And I'll just, I'll point you to your package. There was a portion of that budgeted. They did a little bit of robbing Peter to pay Paul, about 20, almost $29,000 of balance from a welding machine, which still puts us over budget by $12,000, but that, we shouldn't be too surprised with the way things are going in the construction, steel, concrete, lumber, whatever it is you're trying to do right now. Richard, do you want to add anything to that? Did I pretty much cover that?
You can have it.
Okay. All right, I'm just going to put you down if somebody wants to, to ask you a question during the meeting, though. Item 14 is a resolution to procure a 1/6 inch high-head diesel trailer-mounted bypass pump for the sewer department. Tim, you want to cover that? You want to give us, just give us the, the two-minute version of that now, if you will.
Well, as you know, we had to rent quite a few during the storm. Right now, we have two 4-inch, and they will not work on our bigger stations. Not enough head, we can't pump the head. So this is a 6-inch, which actually is, price is in line with what we paid a couple of years ago. So this will be able to handle any of our stations like Doghouse, Grand Hotel, North Section, South Section, without us having to rent anything if we do any kind of normal maintenance where we have to bypass them. I think it's a 74 horsepower Cummings.
Pretty big pump.
It'll pump up to 190 feet ahead, so. And it's, that's at 20, 2,600 gallons a minute.
2,600 gallons per minute. You could fill a pool pretty quick like that, couldn't you?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions for Tim? I'm glad to see we're able to provide you that to help, help people out when we get overwhelmed, when those lift stations gets overwhelmed.
We can set it up. This is including with the float system and the panel controller to where, you know, if it had to stay overnight, it would pump on its own.
Okay. All right. Terry, anything special about the purchase of the 24,500 feet of gas pipe from an inventory? Just replenishing inventory, right?
Yes, and the price is going up. It's $20 every day. It's time to get a little bit more, you know, installed.
All right. I'll put you down if anybody has a question about that during the meeting. All right. 16 is the purchase of an F-250 Supercab 4x2 for the rec. department. Pat, budgeted item?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It is over budgeted.
Just what?
It is over budgeted.
Uh-oh. How much is it over budgeted? I'm going to have to ask you that now.
About $6,000.
Now, is that due to the state of pickup truck sales, or did we just-
We actually purchased a truck back in 19, and did not purchase it last year because the revenue's down. Actually, it's 2,677.
We're lucky to get one, actually, if you know what's going on in the truck market right now, from what I hear. So, yeah, good job. All right. Item 17 is an F-150 for the meter department. Who can, who can discuss that one? Kim, please.
This was actually budgeted as a van, and we are unable to get the vans more than 12 months out, and so plant was able to find a truck, and so the truck will meet their needs. So that's basically how I can answer the question. I don't know any more than that. And so I put a note on that green sheet that it was a van that was budgeted, but it's, you know, due to timing, we just can't get the vans in, in any time. And my understanding is IT departments, IT companies like to use those little vans, and they're just hard to come by right now.
Let me ask you this. In the letter from DeeDee, the first paragraph mentions a 4x2 pickup. The, and then in the second paragraph, there's mentioned a 4x4 pickup.
I think it's a 4x2.
It is, it is a 4x2.
Yeah, the four, the four-wheel drive would be a lot more than that.
Okay. Well, the only reason I ask is I just want to make sure in the, in the resolution that we had it correct. Should we, should it have been a 4x4? Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you, Kim. Mayor, item 18, is there anything for you to add to asking you or authorizing you to submit the municipal water pollution prevention program report? Okay. And then 19, there is a petition to name a currently unnamed road. They ask for us to name it either Alley Cat Lane or Bluffs Bend. I believe that the mayor had mentioned that she thought Bluffs Bend sounded better. I don't know why. It sounds better to me, too, but, but you do have an option, or you don't have to name it anything. You can leave it unnamed. But when you get there, we have a minute, if y'all, we have 10 minutes to discuss it if y'all would like to determine what you'd like to name it. So we could write that in now. You could say you accept and approve the proposed name of, fill in the blank. Y'all have a preference? I'd say we take the mayor's recommendation. Oh, Richard has more info.
Well, and, and kind of we met with plant staff, we just, and again, we decide this is not a hill to die on, because these people seem to be excited about it, but we historically do not name service alleys, because the properties all have a street address. This is a rear access service alley for the benefit of those property owners. So I can't think of any alleys that have a name on it. So it, again, and there's not a purpose to name it, because it can't be addressed to. And, and, and so, you know, it, that, that was our one concern. The other thing is, since you put a street sign up, you're kind of encouraging people to drive through, and it's not designed for, for through traffic. So right now, you go by that alley, it looks like somebody's private driveway, which is kind of is. It's the rear, rear service alley. But again, as a planning staff and as a public works, it's, it's not a hill for us to die on, but it's just a precedent we have not entertained, and I know these citizens are exciting, and they've signed a petition, and we told them all this, and they still wanted to move forward, but I, I can't think of a named alley. And I know when we paved a couple a while back, we just kind of called one east and one west, because they don't have names. So that's just our two cents, but we're not, I think, overly passionate one way or the other.
Just one, one other cent to throw in. You know, we, we do have accessory structures, some, in some locations, accessory buildings, those dwellings, and those are typically an accessory to the principal house. You name alleys, and those buildings are back there, I can foresee those kind of wanting addresses, and then you're getting too, you know, there's a lot of things we've kind of considered here, so, you know, again, I agree with Richard completely. Not the hill we want to die on, but, but just looking at it logically and kind of what we've done in the past and where we would recommend moving forward, we don't, didn't see that necessity.
Now, just to remind you, we'll lose 18 votes if you don't name this something. There's a, there's a hill for you to die on right there. And then also, it looks like this, the person driving this was our, is our HR attorney. So, it is. So how do y'all want to handle this?
I mean, are you saying that this is going to set a precedent for further problems down the road? I just want to make that clear.
How many alleys are there, though?
Well, it's open to neighborhood.
Can we put in the resolution, provided it cannot be used for identification with the property? Is that allowed?
I think that's the whole, probably the whole reason they want it, right, is to put a sign up.
Well, no, but I'm saying, you can't start saying, "Well, my garage is at such-and-such Alley Cat Lane," or whatever, "Bluffs Bend." You know, he was, one of the problems, he said, was that if we, if they start using that street to start calling out an address, it would create a problem. Maybe we could say in the resolution that it's symbolic in nature only.
Do we have to put an actual street sign? Can it be like a-
I don't mind putting a street sign up, just it's symbolic, though. I mean, I don't know. Some people do that on the driveway, Red Bird Way or something like that. Well, I got to have some, a direction when we get to it.
I think you make it a mountain out of a moat, I don't know. Yeah, I mean, they like to see it named. They live there. I don't see a problem with it personally. You don't have to stick a sign on it unless they prefer to have one.
I think they would.
Well, they mentioned a-
They will until all that traffic starts coming down.
Well, which one do you want to name it, then? When you make the motion, you have to, you have to make the motion to-
Bluffs Bend? I agree with Mayor. I kind of like that name better. Something about alley.
You like Bluffs Bend?
I do.
All right, well, then, when it comes up, you can make the motion to accept it and approve the proposed name of Bluffs Bend, then.
Will not be a problem.
I'll try to, and then, and then you'll, then whomever wants to second that can, can do so, and if you don't, somebody can else can make a motion to-
Alley Cat.
Yeah, Alley Cat, or you can make the motion to reject it or disapprove it, or you don't have to make a motion at all. Those are all your options there.
Bluffs will be made.
All right, accept, approve. All right, now, don't go to sleep over there tonight, Kevin.
Don't you worry about me, bro. I'll be with you to the end.
All right. I think that's it. We've got about five minutes. We'll go ahead and adjourn this, and let's, let's-